Alright, man. Welcome to the 290 More Podcast. I appreciate your time. If you could, introduce yourself for my viewers and listeners.
Yeah, man. Appreciate you for having me on the show. Uh, you know, my name is Corey Dooley. Uh, a little bit about myself, uh, I'm a survivor of gun violence, you know, and domestic violence firstly. You know, in two thousand thirteen, almost ten years ago, uh, I was shot four times on my stepfather. And, uh, man, we was on my way home from my little brother's football game. And, uh, you know, long story short, you know, doctors gave me less than a one percent chance to survive. Uh, they said I wouldn't walk again, and now I'm running for office, you know, so, uh, man, since that, man, I went on to play football at Concordia University, right over there. Yeah, bro. So went over there, played football, man. Yeah, yeah. It's like a division three school, you know, it ain't like your division one, but, uh, man, met my wife there, bro. Uh, you know, got married like in September. Um, went back to school. I ain't never really been like a studious type. But as I got older and like I started to find stuff I like, um, man, I, I, I found that I like architecture, bro. So I'm like getting my second masters in architecture right now. I go to school online at Arizona State University. Man, look, I done worked in the schools, man. I, I read, I wrote, I wrote a book, you know, doing, doing a whole bunch of things, bro. But, you know, just, just as I fought for my life, you know, now I'm running to fight for my community, uh, as the next twenty ninth war alderman, so, yep.
Man, that's, that's a handful, man.
Yeah, bro. I know I threw a lot at you.
For sure. I appreciate that, cuz I just wanted to go by order and take things in order a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, if you don't mind talking about, you say you're a survivor of domestic and, and gun violence?
Yeah.
So, uh, if you can, could you expand on that story a little bit before? And before you expand on that, previous to that, what was your experiences with, with, uh, gun violence and domestic violence?
Man, prior to that, so originally I grew up in Dallas, Texas. Uh, and so, you know, growing up there, it's like, if you know anything about Texas, it's about football, you know? Church and football, that's like the two things, really.
Friday Night Lights.
Yeah, and so, man, for me, you know, I grew up, my plan was to be an All-American, you know, go to the University of Texas and get drafted into the NFL. Uh, then I realized, man, when I woke up in the hospital, like, I don't know if I'm gonna be able to make it to the NFL. I don't even know if I'm gonna be able to play football. Uh, but as far as like domestic violence, you know, that's like family violence, like violence you experience in the house. Uh, I would say that I ain't never really had like a firsthand experience, uh, gun violence. Uh, before that, you know, I, I was shot when I was fifteen, so I was like my sophomore year of high school, uh, you know, um, yeah, but I feel like when people hear domestic violence, they think more like physical, which is true, you know, it, it can get physical, you know, altercations. But also it can be like mental too, you know, people are like, they can play mind games on you as a kid, you know, as far as like, uh, I'll just give a quick example, like, oh, we gonna go to dinner on Friday, or if you do the, if you do good in the game, I'll give you a hundred dollars. But then when that time come, they act like they, you know, they never made that promise, right? So it's kind of like a mind game, really, bro. And, um, that was really like my experience, more like a, a, like a psychological mind game experience, you know, like people like abusing you with words and like, uh, not keeping promises, that type of stuff, bro.
Okay. If, if you could, could you walk us through that event? Like, do, do you remember the, the, what led up to that?
Man, I ain't gonna never forget that night, bro. There was like, it was like a Wednesday night, bro, October, uh, fifteenth. Uh, it was actually October sixteen. Uh, and man, we was, we was at my little brother's football game. He was in the seventh grade. And, uh, my mama had decided she was gonna, uh, separate from my, from my, uh, stepdad at the time. They had met, they had been dating for like six years, had been married for a couple of years. But he came into my life, bro, around like, I wanna say like fourth grade, maybe like third grade, you know, so, you know, third grade to ninth grade, that's like a critical time, like you developing. So like, you know, he used to show us, you know, he was a football player, so he, you know, he taught us, oh, yeah, you gonna go to the NFL, you gonna do it like, you know, I didn't make it, but y'all gonna make it type of thing. You know, and, uh, uh, actually would show us the gun and would be like, you know, if anyone break into the house, like I'm gonna use this to protect us, like, you know, y'all should know where it's at. You know, in case anything ever go down, I got y'all, you know, whoa, 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 that type of stuff, bro. But, uh, yeah, so my mama decided, you know, stuff was getting crazy, you know, at that time, bro, a lot going on, and my mama was just like, this was like the, uh, this was like summer, uh, like August, bro, right before I started my sophomore year. And we was like, yeah, we, my mama decided she was gonna get a divorce, as I told you, you know, things was just getting a little out of hand, and we went to stay with my grandmother. And she lived like thirty minutes away, so we would have to make that commute, you know, like every day, you know, going to school thirty minutes and then have to drive another thirty minutes. And in Texas, you gotta drive everywhere, bro, cuz it's just, it's just, that's how it is. Uh, and so I remember we was at my little brother's football game, and, uh, and then we get done with the game, and I was, uh, gonna sit in the front seat, cuz you know, I'm like big bro, so, you know, I always get the front seat. My younger brother, he like a year and a half younger than me. Uh, but I was like, damn, he, he played a good game, I'm gonna go ahead and let him get the front seat. And so he came out the locker room, I was like, hey, bro, you can get the front seat. He was like, no, you got it, like, you know, that's, that's cool. I was like, okay, I bet. So, man, we on the way home, and it's around like nine o'clock, so, you know, it's dark, and, uh, man, I remember we was pulling up to my granny crib, and I just remember, bro, getting like this weird feeling, like I ain't never felt nothing like this. It was like a, almost like a spiritual, bro. I don't really know how to describe it, but maybe it's cuz it was a lot going on, so maybe that's why I felt a little uneasy. Man, I remember we pull into the garage, so we get into the garage, bro, and, uh, you know, people got like them garage door openers, you know, you can just click it open, click it close. So we in the garage, I'm in the passenger seat, my mom in the driver's seat, and my brother is right behind me, right, sitting like right behind my mom in the backseat. Bro, we, my mama clicked the garage door opener to go down, something getting in the way of the sensor, the garage door jerked back up, and I remember hearing my brother like gasp, he was like, huh, like something like that. Bro, I looked to my right, and that was my, my stepdad at the time, like, literally like, you know, garage's small, so he ain't nothing but like six or ten to ten feet away from me at the time, and he got that same gun, bro, that he was saying he was finna protect us with, now he turned it on us. And he swearing, like, you know, get the, get the F out the car, I'm not playing, I'm not playing, and man, we just like, you know, don't shoot, don't shoot. Man, he start firing, bro. And so, uh, I get hit two times on my right side, uh, one in my, in my shoulder blade, and then one came through my lung and like lodged somewhere in my heart. Bro, I turned to cover my mama, my mama turned to cover me, and then when I turned like that, I got hit in my left hip, cuz I was turning like this. So I got hit two more times in my left hip. And while all this going on, my mama telling my brother from the backseat to, to let my seat back, so I don't get hit in the head. So, well, I'm sitting at like, maybe like a forty-five degree angle, like recline, and I just remember, bro, them bullets was hot, like, you know what I mean? Like, that was like a feeling that I couldn't, I can't even really describe. Uh, came around the front of the car, shot through the windshield, shot at my mama, hit her in the, in her shoulder, bro. Then he came around the, uh, uh, the driver's side of the car, and he had the gun pointed at her head, like, you know, it's finna be over, bro. And, uh, you know, uh, my family, my mama always been big in the faith, and man, she just started screaming the name Jesus, bro. And, uh, she screamed that name a few times, and he, and she said he told her to start the car. And so, you know, we was kind of caught off ambush, so we ain't really know what to do. So she go to start the car, and he moved the gun from her head to her arm, and he shot it through the forearm to try to keep it from reversing. And man, bro, basically, long story short, we got, we got out the gym and, you know, went down the street, you know, my mama called, you know, the cops, they came, whoop, scoop me up. And then I was in the, in the hospital, bro, in a coma for like three days, and man, hey, now I'm here, bro, so.
That was wild, man. That's wild. Quick sad, no, I got an aunt who husband like shot her like seven or nine times and she survived.
Wow, bro.
And she was big in the faith too. But not to get too far off the story, I, I, I heard you mention they was hot. What, what, what else did you feel? Cuz sometimes you hear people say like the adrenaline rush, you don't feel the pain, but you, you, you kind of feel it. What, did you, did your light flash before your eyes? Did you think you was, you wasn't gonna make it? What, what, what was you at that moment going through?
Yeah, bro, these some good questions. I'm glad you asking these. But man, for me, I feel like it depend on the, the scenario, right? For me, it was like, it was kind of like an ambush, and I couldn't go nowhere, you know, I couldn't run, I couldn't. So at that point, I just had to really like.
And it's somebody that you probably gained a love for.
Yeah, bro, you know, that's somebody who I put trust, that's my, you know, that's my dad at that point, you know, ain't my, my biological father, but, you know, he, he raised us, you know what I mean? Show, showed us what it was like to be a man, how to work out, you know, he kind of laid out my future as far as what I was gonna do. And, uh, man, bro, them, them bullets was, was hot, bro. That's, that's, I remember like they, them hitting me, and it felt like, uh, it felt like there was like a hole in my body, and like a whole bunch of water was just like spewing out, you know, it was just real hot, and I felt like it was like a whole bunch of liquid just leaving my body. Uh, and after that, the first one hurt so bad that like the other three, I didn't really like feel them like that. At that point, I was a little numb to it, bro. So, yeah, but that first one, bro, that, that, yeah, yeah, that one was hot, bro.
Did, did little bro go unharmed, or? I know mentally, he, he.
Yeah, physically, yeah, he was unharmed, bro. Uh, so I got shot four times, my mama got hit twice, um, and then my brother, nah, he didn't get hit, you know, thank God he didn't get hit, so.
Okay. So you guys, y'all get out the gym, what happens next? Is, is law enforcement immediately involved? Are you placed in some type of medical coma, or what's, what's the next step?
So I remember driving down the street, bro, and my vision start to turn red. My mama, like she on the phone, she couldn't find her phone, and she was driving in a Cadillac, and they got like OnStar. She was able to click it, and it like took her, you know, right to where they needed to be. Man, I remember my vision turning red. Bro, I had on this icy Nike jacket, bro. It was like my favorite, bro. It was like gray with like a black swoosh, bro, I was clean. And I remember thinking, and bro, this is now that I think about, think back on it, I'm like, why was I thinking of this? But it was like, I, I was like, damn, I ain't gonna never be able to wear this hoodie again, like, that's my favorite hoodie. Uh, but man, I remember thinking, I was like, God, like, man, if you could just save me right now, like, whatever you do, man, like, I give you my life, like, just save me, like, please, please. And, uh, I had passed out a little bit, and then I woke up on the ground, uh, I like, we had pulled into, you know, somewhere where it was like well lit, I think it was like a CVS or something like that. And I remember the paramedics get in there, and I just tell them like, damn, my butt hurt, like my butt hurting, like dang. And her, whole time I had got hit in like my femoral artery in my left leg, and then, and then I found out about the body, it's like, it's like five main arteries that run like throughout your body and pump blood to your heart. And he had hit the main one in my leg, so I was losing a lot of blood there.
Sean Taylor got, got hit right there.
Yeah, bro. Yep, yep. And so, sim- similar thing, bro, you know, um, and then, man, I just remember telling the doctors, like, man, save me, just like, I don't know if you watch Grey's Anatomy, bro. But it's like, in a, in a, basically in a movie scenes where like the person on the bed, and there's all the doctors and scrubs around you, and it's like them bright lights. And, uh, I remember just passing out, and I was in a coma for like three days. I would say I was like in and out. I kind of remember people coming in the room and like, you know, like being by me, but only like flashes, bro. Like very vague. I don't really remember too much from like that coma period.
Okay. So, as you tell a story, I don't hear you too much mention any fear, like throughout. Was, was, was there any concern, like, once y'all got away from him, was like, was he immedi- immediately apprehended? Was he, you know what I'm saying? What, what happened to him after that? And, and did you get, get any like fear, you know what I'm saying, of just guns or people you don't know, or just letting new people around, cuz you know what I'm saying? What, what role did fear play in this whole situation?
Yeah, I mean, after that, you know, after we had got away, so what we had found out was, when we was at my, my little brother's football game that night, bro was like, he was like in the cut, like watching us. Yeah, like in the bushes type thing, there was like a little, it was like the football field, it was the stands, and then it was like a little, it was like a ditch.
It'd be busting.
Yeah, bro, and so he was like over there like plotting, and like, he knew my grandmother's state, obviously. So he got there before, he parked around the corner, so he couldn't, it was like a little, a corner and a little cul-de-sac, but we ain't go over there, obviously, cuz our crib wasn't right there. But, um, yeah, when we was driving away, obviously, we had the fear that he was following us, you know, my mama was like looking in the rearview, making sure he wasn't following us or nothing, bro. Uh, he actually, after that, he kind of, he just sat on the concrete, bro, and waited, you know, the neighbors called the cops and stuff. So he just sat on the concrete, bro, and, um, and waited for, for the authorities to apprehend him. But yeah, it wa- it was times, bro, when I was in that hospital, that I was thinking like, dang, somebody could walk in right now and like finish the job type of thing, you know, he could, he could send one of his family members to try to, you know, finish the job. So, yeah, bro, it, it was, it was definitely some times where, you know, that PTSD, that's what they call it, bro.
Yeah, for sure.
That I, that I had, and I say probably, I probably still got some of that to this day, you know what I mean? Yeah.
Okay, so, um, how did that experience, hmm, how did that experience affect your outlook on, on firearms and guns overall? Are you, are you a, a gun carrier, or are you a, a FOI card holder, uh, concealed carry? What's your, what's your overall views on guns, especially being in the city and especially experiencing gun violence firsthand?
Yeah, uh, bro, I, I gotta say, this is one of the, the best podcasts I've been on, bro, these, these questions, bro. I ain't never had these questions, so I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Uh, but for me, uh, I don't own a gun, I don't carry a gun, I don't have my FOI card, um, you know, um, but, you know, for my brother, it was different for him, like he, he got guns, um, all legal in Texas, you know, the restrictions are a little lighter. He don't open carry, but, but he does have them legally, uh, you know, uh, we do have them in our house. Uh, but man, you know, I never really, I guess I never really thought about, you know, my take on guns, you know, I'm from Texas, everybody carry a gun, so I think, you know, illegally, we got the right to. And I think people should be able to, you know, carry a gun, conceal carry, open carry, as long as they not, you know, harming anyone else. Um, so, yeah, I, I think that's, that's kind of my take on guns, you know, I'm not like a, oh, we need to get rid of guns, or I'm, I'm against guns, or let's ban weapons. I think, um, I think it's more of a people issue, you know what I mean? We could be using knives to commit violence, it'd be like ban knives. Or we could, I mean, we use our words all the times to commit violence, bro, we can say ban words. So I think it's, you know, no matter the instrument, I think it's the people, bro, and the mindset that kind of go into, you know, people wanting to commit harm.
Okay. And before we move on from that situation, uh, what happened, what happened to your stepdad? Did he, did he go to jail? What, what happened? Do you, do you, did you have, did you ever speak to him ever again since then? What, what was that like? Cuz like I said, my aunt went through that situation. And my cousin, her son, you know what I'm saying? I don't, his, his daddy did his time or whatever, he's out now, and it's like, I'm, I'm, that's an amazing thing, you know what I'm saying?
Wow. Yeah, I don't know how much, how much time, uh, that he had to do in that situation, uh, but in my situation, so this happened in two thousand thirteen, and then I think the trial happened in two thousand fifteen. Uh, and he ended up getting sentenced to like thirty years. That was kind of, that kind of opened my eyes to like the whole court process. And then I figured out, it ain't what, you know, as far as like law and the court of law, it ain't what happened, but it's what you can prove, you know, what can you get somebody on charges for? So oftentimes, people be like, did he, you know, for attempted murder, or, you know, uh, but that's very hard to prove, you gotta prove intention. Uh, so they got him, I think, on like two counts of, um, child endangerment and then assault with a deadly weapon. Now, even though there was lesser charges, that was something that they could prove in a court of law based on the evidence that they had. So he got like thirty years, he did two years in, uh, in the jail, so they put that, they, they took that off his time, so I think he got like twenty-eight years. Um, and serving time somewhere, um, in, in a Texas prison, bro. Um, and he was like forty-some, so, you know, uh, you know, twenty years, well, you, you really only gotta do like half the time, so maybe like fifteen, you know, twenty years that he'll probably do. So, yeah, you know, if he get out, you know, I guess I had to face that then, bro, but, uh, as far as now, you know, yeah, he, he locked away.
Is that something that you will face, or is it something you just like, you know what I'm saying, fuck it?
Uh, I remember being in the courtroom, bro, and I said, like, when I got in the courtroom, I said that I was gonna look this man in his eyes and like stare him down, bro, like, you know how like LeBron will block you and like stare you down, like, I just did that. It was kind of like the same feeling, bro, that I wanted to give him, like, you tried it, but it didn't work. And like, I wanna let you know, bro, like, I'm still alive, like, I'm still here, like, uh, so, yeah, bro, I just remember being in the courtroom, and I like stared him down, bro. And, uh, and, uh, bro, me stared down for, for a couple of minutes. People was actually worried that I might get up and like do something to him, but I just wanted to send that message. Uh, and yeah, bro, I ain't seen him, you know, since, since that day in court, twenty fifteen, um, I ain't seen him since then.
Wow, man, that, that's, that's, that's an amazing story, man. I appreciate you sharing that with the show, man.
Yeah.
So, so to move along, cuz we could, we could probably go the whole show on, on them two topics alone, man. So, 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 so the segue to, to the next topic, man. How, how did you end up in Chicago?
Yeah, so, man, I remember getting a letter in the mail, so, uh, actually, I, I take it back just so we can transition smoothly. Uh, so I, like I said, I was a sophomore, bro, when I had got hit and all that had happened to me, and, uh, I was like a hundred and sixty-five pound football player, uh, before I had went into the hospital. And then I remember waking up in the hospital, where I was like ninety-seven pounds, the first time I could step on a scale. And, um, and even before that, the doctor, I remember when I had came out of my coma, the doctor walked into the room, and the first thing I asked him was, am I gonna be able to make it to the game next week? Like, I'm alive, like.
Do we win the game?
Yeah, like, yeah, like, we, he say handling. I'm like, I'm good, like, I'm alive, right? Like, I, like, I'm straight. And he was like, man, if you work hard enough, you could probably make it, you know, next season or something like that. Uh, man, by the grace of God, bro, I had a speedy recovery, and, uh, we did, I was able to make it back in, back on the field, bro, in like six months in time for spring football. And so made it back, but fa- uh, flash forward to my senior year, I remember getting a, a letter in the mail from, uh, Concordia University, Chicago, and, uh, I told my mama, I was like, I ain't going to Chicago. I just got shot. I ain't trying to get shot again.
Damn, that's like.
And she was like, uh, she was like, boy, you gonna go there, giving you money to go. And, uh, and I was like, alright, mama. So we, we end up taking a trip, bro, to Chicago. And I remember after I had landed at O'Hare, bro, we was in the Uber on the way downtown to the airport, and, bro, I got like this feeling, bro, in me, that was like, the city was like calling my name, bro. I kept hearing like Corey, Corey in my head, and I'm like, dang, okay, like this, I'm like, I might need to be here for a reason, bro. And, uh, man, came up here, uh, they said I could play as a freshman football, and, uh, I kind of knew, my mama always told me I was gonna be a lawyer. Uh, so that kind of like dictated me wanting to do political science and just kind of get, I knew Chicago was like a political city. So, man, that kind of just like sparked my interest in that.
I don't know too much for the good reasons, but we gonna get into that, man.
We gonna get into that, it's political, but, uh, but, yeah, and I'm, I'm finding out about that now, bro. But met my wife there too, bro, just got involved with what's going on. Um, you know, got a heart for the community, you know, I've been organizing the community since I was fifteen, you know, since that happened to me. Um, you know, whether I was like leading, you know, rallies, um, you know, speaking at, at churches and different events, bro, I got like a documentary out. Um, I did like a lot of interviews, bro, but just really creating awareness and really just being that light, bro, and that role model for other people, you know, so that they can know, you know, you can make it out of your situation.
Okay, okay. So, you, you shoot up here to Concordia, man. I, I'm very familiar with, I, I never been to inside there, but they, like the, the parks around there, I be playing Pokemon Go, they got like the best, the best spots around there, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, cool, cool.
Yeah, so I, I'm very familiar with the area. Mine's be driving past, like, it's a low-key like school in the cut, you know what I'm saying? With a lot going on, you know what I'm saying? So, i- if my man was in different places growing up, you know what I'm saying, that's probably like one of my biggest regrets is not, you know what I'm saying, getting me like a, like, I always said to, um, journalism, cuz I like watching like the sports debate shows, so that's what's, would have been something I'm interested in, but I went down a different course. But, but standing on, standing on you, man, you in Concordia, playing football, doing political science, man, what, what was your aspirations to do at that point? Did you, was it to be a lawyer, was to be a football player, what? At that point, what was you, what was you working to, to be?
Man, um, I felt like I was kind of like in that mindset. I feel like a lot of young black men, you know, we grow up kind of, our role models is rappers and athletes. And so even though I knew I was at a division three school, you know, which typically don't produce, you know, NFL players, you know, just because it's a lower tier, you know, still, still, it's still at a collegiate level, but it's not like your division one schools, you don't get as much, you know, notoriety and stuff like that. Um, but in my mind, bro, I still thought I was going to the NFL, bro, like.
It's possible, man. You just gotta transfer from that school to another school.
And now, and now, and that was my whole, like, that was my whole thing, even though I was going to school for political science, like, you know, I was getting involved in the community, I still had this thought that like, that was gonna be my thing. You know, I, you know, go to law school too, and I went to go to law school, um, you know, obviously to be a lawyer, but, you know, if it wasn't, if it wasn't going to the NFL, then it was me going to law school. That was kind of my, that was kind of my mindset at the time.
Did you go into law school have anything to do with, um, your situation going through, um, your stepfather getting, getting the time he got? Did that have anything to do with it, or?
Uh, I don't know. My mama always told me that I was good at arguing, like, I would always like, whenever she would tell me something, I always had like a rebuttal. Yeah, you can get paid for that, like, you got a skill. Always had a rebuttal, uh, uh, could shape it to a certain way to where I could get myself out of a situation and make it sound like something different. Uh, which a politician might be. But, uh, yeah, bro, so I think that, that kind of like played a factor. I wanted to do like civil rights, so I didn't really, I ain't wanna go into like criminal justice law or anything, or a family law. I kind of wanted to do like civil rights. So I don't, I don't really think that that situation had at least that much to do with it.
Hmm, okay. And real quick, just, I over skipped this question. If you don't mind me asking, what was your real father, and did he have a, a take on anything that was going on up through your life up to that point? Or, or, or if you could explain?
Yeah, bro, this, this finna turn into a whole Netflix original, bro.
We gonna have to work on that next, man.
Yeah, uh, but nah, I, I'm glad you asking these, bro, because the, the story is, is deep, bro. I found out, so, I got a, a, an older si- on my mom's side, uh, who I grew up with. Uh, my younger brother, uh, who like a year and a half younger than me, uh, his name is Cody, uh, and then I got an older sister that's like six years older than me, her name is Amori. And so my older sister, her father died, bro, um, when she was like two, and so she grew up without a father, and me and my brother, uh, we got the same dad. Um, you know, we got the same last name, and then, you know, so, you know, we always had a close bond. We was only like a year and a half, you know, my older sister raised us. Um, and then we get to like the ninth grade, and I found out that, you know, me and my brother ain't had the same dad. And now for me, that was like, my whole world kind of came crashing down, cuz that's like, dang, like, what you mean? Like, that's my little brother, like, we, you know.
How you find out? Or did you just like, hey, you know, y'all getting older, y'all should know?
Y'all, you know, you getting older, like, you know, let me just go ahead and, you know, let you know. Um, and that was confusing for me, because even though, you know, our dad, you know, at the time wasn't in our life, we would see him, you know, every now, every now and then, and then, uh, so when I had found that out, you know, we would go, we would see him and whatever, and my, my mama, uh, my stepdad at the time, he wasn't really cool with that. Like I said, he was controlling, he ain't want us to see our dad, you know, he wanted to be the dad type, you know, be overly controlling. Uh, so when he found out that I had a dad, you know, bro was definitely like, oh, no, like, this ain't, you know, you ain't gonna never meet him, like, no, like, I'm not cool with that at all. And that's kind, and that really like was like, you know, my mama had to decide, like, dang, is my son gonna be able to meet his dad someday, or am I gonna stay in this marriage, you know, with this man, and this gonna be their only dad? And so, you know, I, I definitely, bro, you know, loved my mom for making that decision, decide like, she chose me, you know, over a man, you know, she decided that it was more important for me to meet my dad. Um, than it was for her to stay in that marriage and keep up this, you know, keep up whatever. And so I met my real dad, bro, like three weeks right before I got shot. And so, uh, funny thing is, bro, my dad is a cameraman for NBC Five, my real dad. So when I got, had got shot, bro, he was like, like, I had got like a lot of interviews, like, he was sometimes like recording me and stuff like that, bro. So it's just like a small world, but there, bro, that was, that was real like traumatic for my family, you know, that was a real like hectic time, and it was a blessing, you know, that I could meet him. But then as soon as I did, you know, that happened, but I think it was, I think it kind of worked out because it created like that bond, you know, even though we had missed out on, you know, fifteen years, sixteen years or whatever. I think that happened and kind of like made us closer, bro.
And that's what I was getting ready to ask you, so did you have any ill will toward him before meeting him? Like, man, you ain't been around, walked about, or you just like, man, whenever I meet him, you know what I'm saying, I'm gonna see what's to him, what, what was your?
Yeah, kind of like that, bro, you know, I, you know, when you a child, you don't really understand stuff like that, you know, I didn't really understand like, you know, what happened, and, you know, I feel like even in a like, a lot of black families, like, stuff happen that we don't really know, we don't really ask questions.
Talk about it.
We don't talk about it, bro, and it's, and, and it's not just in, you know, my family, that's like a generational, you know, thing that's been going on, so I was more so like, you know, damn, I'm just, I'm just happy to meet, bro. Um, but then, you know, as I got older, you know, I start asking questions and stuff, and, and I got the answers that I needed. Uh, but, yeah, at that time, it was just like, man, let me, let me just meet him, you know, let me, let me see what's to him, you know, so, yeah.
And you say he a cameraman?
Yeah, bro, yeah.
NBC, that, that's, that's, that's kind of a big deal in the cameraman, in the cameraman world, so. Is that something he retired from, or, or something he still doing?
Been doing it, yeah, he still do it, bro, uh, out in Dallas, um, he still do his thing, bro.
That's dope.
So, yeah, he kind of, he been doing that like his whole career, you know, went to school for it, got in, and, yeah, kind of been doing that.
He gotta shoot a, a campaign spot for you, man.
Man, I swear, bro, I be trying to tell him. Yeah.
Alright, man, so, uh, I want, let's, let's, let's get into what you got going on now, man.
Yeah.
Alright, so, so what exactly are you running for? No, I guess we can't go there for, we can't, we can't go that way. So, how did you start getting into, you know what I'm saying, paying attention to, to politics and, and maybe wanting to insert yourself into the one day? Like, what was going on with, between the football and, and the being a lawyer? What, how did that become a part of the whole equation?
Yeah, bro, um, I think it was right around like my sophomore year in college, um, we had like a partnership with, uh, uh, UIC John Marshall, and that's a law school. And they was offering like this course, it was like a free course, and you, and they would give you college credit, and you could go downtown once a week and learn about like, like housing and like, and you know, like the segregation in Chicago, why Chicago is the way it is, and like redlining and all of that historical stuff on why Chicago is the way it is.
And why, why, is it, is it because of racism? That's a red line now, it is, right?
Basically, you know, systematic racism, you know, white flight, you know.
Every, everybody knows that, is, I just wanna be clear. So everybody like knows that, like the politicians and stuff, they know that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, they should, I mean, that's like Chicago history, you know?
Yeah, but I'm saying, it, it don't change though. It don't change.
Yeah, there's the machine, they done built the machine, you know, and I think now, you know, I think we gonna get into that, how it's kind of breaking down a little bit, but for the most part, yeah, they built the machine, you know, they built the. You know, they built the city, the federal government was involved with it, you know what I mean, that's why this whole conversation around reparations is starting to happen because the federal government was involved in this, like, you know what I mean, like, we got promises of forty acres and a mule that we ain't never get, you know. Um, so, but, yeah, bro, so I, I got involved with that, and I remember meeting, uh, uh, he was like a professor down there. Uh, I think his name was, uh, Louis Powell, he's also an attorney. And I told him, I was like, man, I just wanna get involved in what's going on, I got a heart for the community, I wanna serve, and he was like, man, uh, uh, you should, you should connect with, um, triple A B N A, and that's short for the Austin African American Business Networking Association, that's why everybody's just say triple A B N A, cuz that's a long name. Uh, and man, I just started getting connected with a whole bunch of like community organizations, bro, um, them, uh, college mentoring experience. And then I just started getting involved with like the schools, bro, I started hosting like peace circles, um, at, at Brunson Elementary right over there on Central. Um, you know, uh, uh, met a teacher by the name of Miss O, bro, she was very helpful, uh, Chicago Police Department was right there, the fifteenth district police. Um, Officer Ramirez and Martinez, and then I started, uh, volunteering, bro, with the police district, and man, just you know, working with faith leaders and, and business owners, bro. Um, and, yeah, it's, it's a big old, and right now in Chicago, Mayor Lori Lightfoot got this Invest Southwest Initiative. And basically, it's like this big old pot of money going to the south and west sides, they got like ten places where they wanna build up like the business districts in the areas, basically like, you know, communities of color, you know, black areas really. Uh, and black and Hispanic areas, and, um, and one of them is on Chicago Avenue between Austin and Cicero. And they calling it Soul City, so you, you from Chicago, bro, you know Chinatown, Greettown, Little Italy, you got all these cultural enclaves, right? And these people, and they also work as like, uh, uh, they call like economic drivers, where they, where it can create money, you know, why don't we got that for black people? And so, you know, now we do, we got Soul City, basically like, kinda like a rebuilding of Black Wall Street, bro. And so it was just from there, like, I started, you know, I had to work with the city, bro, I had to work with the community, and I just started seeing like, dang, like, this, it's a bigger picture to this. And that kinda just started getting me, piquing my interest in the like politics a little bit.
Okay, that's, that's definitely dope, that's definitely dope, cuz you know, Chicago, well, I don't know if you know, cuz you did spend time in Texas, but it's a few places in Chicago that was, you know what I'm saying, kinda like Black Wall Street, like, I hear stories all the time, and I'm, I'm thirty one. So I hear stories all the time from just people in my family, uh, I don't know if you feel with ma- familiar with Madison Pulaski. But like before the King Rights, that was like a supreme shopping spot, you know what I'm saying, you could see the skyline from right there, everything. And people literally say, this look, place look like this since the King Rights, you know what I'm saying, so we definitely got, got the spots like that, but before we move on, wanna ask you, what made you wanna stay here though? Like, why didn't you get the, the information, you was going like, man, I wanna, I wanna take this to Texas, was, you feel like it's a bigger need, did you feel more connected? Or was it, you know what I'm saying, when you got off the plane and, and the city was talking to you, it's just, it's just from that point?
Guess a little bit, a little bit of all of that, bro, um, for me, it was just like, I know, whatever happened in Chicago, bro, is like world news. And Chicago got so much history in it, you know, uh, uh, and, and a lot of, uh, black excellence, bro, a lot of I didn't even know Martin Luther King, bro, was in Chicago until I came here and like seen the legacy apartments right over there, bro. And just learned about the movements, bro, um, and you know, how many, how much power, uh, was in Chicago. Uh, and so I knew, I wanted to tap into that power base, and especially like in Texas, at least where I grew up, it wasn't a strong black power base. Or if you, right now, if I'm running for politics in Texas where I live, and I look like how I look with blonde hair, it ain't going, it ain't But here it is, um, and I knew that especially with young black men, we were struggling a lot more than how we was in Texas. Like, you know, we struggling where I grew up in Dallas, but in Chicago, you know, a lot more people, right, a lot more segregation. Um, and I was like, man, this is an area that, that needs to see somebody like me, you know, this is an area that needs to see like a positive image, you know, a positive role model. And, uh, man, I just, as I started getting involved in the community, making connections, it like became my family, you know, the west side is really like, you know, the best side, but But it's really, you, you know, it's smaller, so people know each other, right, it got like a family vibe to it, bro. And, uh, man, I, I can definitely say that, that, man, Chicago has become my family, bro, Austin has become my family, so, uh, yeah.
Man, that's dope, that's dope, man, and, and no, no bullshit, man, this, this could be a bio pickup to this point, you know what I'm saying, it could, it could be a flick, man. That might be something you need to start writing on, man, at least, at least a biography, man, at least a biography, man, so. So, uh, okay, man, so you, you got your hands in all these pots, man, you working with all these different groups and stuff. Was it, was it suggested to you that, I mean, you should run for some type of office, or was it, once you got into these circles, it became a goal of yours? Like, how did it become that important that you was like, I, I wanna represent these people?
Yeah, um, you know, once I just understood, you know, the political structure, um, and people will always say like, man, you know, you got a great story, you know, you're doing great work. You know, you got the education, you know, you, you might be a, a good fit for alderman, you know, um, especially with the work that I was doing on Chicago Avenue, just um, and really in the community, but specifically, um, you know, that forced me to work with the city, I had to work with the state. You know, I had to work with faith leaders, I had to work with business owners, I had to work with youth and seniors. Um, and I was really like, kinda like an alderman on a smaller scale, and I was like, man, you know, how beautiful would it be for me to be able to take this to the next level, because as I moved around the ward, people told me like, you know, I don't really see my alderman that much, you know, I don't really know him, he doesn't really come around, you know, he's hard to reach, you know, he don't really communicate with the people. And I'm like, man, I do all of that stuff, so like, you know, I really just wanna see the people thrive, like, I wanna see, I wanna let people know that, you know, somebody care about them, they elected officials care, bro, and that really is what prompted me, just to be able to serve the people and let them know, like, you know, don't give up on government yet, like, as I, and I had, and I had, but now I'm kinda running to let people know, like, no, there's power in this, like, we, we got, you could, we could organize and we could mobilize and create some power and really bring resources and some change to our area.
Okay, so what, what, what exactly goes into being an alderman and what district are you, are you running, running for?
Yeah, so, uh, I always tell people, like, the city of Chicago, you know, is, is big, um, and, you know, they got a mayor. And they basically split the city up into like fifty different, uh, wards, they call them, right? Um, and right now, I'm running on, in the twenty ninth ward, which is like this area, like the Austin area. Um, you know, down Austin to like, you know, Central, and then it even goes like past North Avenue, um, to like Harlem and Belmont, so.
Fifteenth, twenty fifth district?
Yeah, fifteen, twenty fifth Police District, uh, Gilwood, uh, a little bit of Belmont Craigin, you know, uh, uh, Austin area. Uh, but, yeah, you know, basically like your alderman, you know, they meet once a month with the mayor, um, to kinda give an update, you know, on their ward. Um, they, they vote on, you know, like the budget, you know, big development happening in the city, you know, basically big city decisions. And then when they not meeting with the mayor, they're, they, at least they should be, you know, in their wards, you know, you got a pothole that need to be fixed. Your, a tree just fell down in your yard or is dead, your alderman need to remove that. If somebody, you know, trying to bring like a, a, a restaurant to the ward and they wanna serve liquor, the alderman can give them like a liquor license. Or they can say, no, this area is dry, like, we can't have no alcohol here. Um, and they, they also, you know, responsible for like development that happens, somebody wanna bring a gym, or somebody wanna bring a grocery store, you know, that has to go through the alderman.
Okay, so, um, I wanna ask you about your, your personal views on Chicago's mayor and Chicago's police.
Man, that's a loaded question.
You, you take it one at a time, unload it a little bit.
Let me, let me unwind that, so, bro, I, I, I've read that the mayor of Chicago is the most powerful position in America behind the United, uh, be- behind the president.
Really? Why is that?
Just because, it's, you know, Chicago is just like, it's a world-class city, you know. Um, and, you know, that, they, I think they said Chicago is like the second best city in the world. Um, you know, so many different cultures, right, uh, so much history in it, so much money, you know, a lot of organizations here, so. Man, that's really like being the president almost, just with the stress and the pressure and so many different groups that you have to advocate for. So it's a hard job, bro, for anybody that's trying to do it. Uh, I worked with, um, Mayor Rahm Emanuel previously on, he had like a retail, a retail Thrive Zone project. Uh, Mayor Lori Lightfoot got in office and kinda, uh, continued the program, added her own little flair to it, um, and so, man, uh, there's like nine different people running against her right now, you know, obviously, you know, somebody, they wanna see a change, right? Um, and so, you know, as far as the mayor, you know, tip, uh, uh, that's, that's, that's a hard race right now, you got nine different candidates. You know, and each of them got experience from different fields, he even got the young Ju- the young guy Jamal Green, you know, running, so. Uh, you, you got the guy right here from the west side, Brandon Johnson running, you know, uh, right here in the twenty ninth ward. Um, and so it's, it's a stacked race, but, you know, I, I guess we gonna see what happen, uh, you know, on February twenty eighth.
Uh, well, with, with the Chicago mayors, I think I would love for Jamal Green to be the mayor, just because I feel like that blood, that new, that new, the, the younger generation man up into somebody who has boots on the ground, I feel like that's kinda what the city needs most. But at the same time, you do gotta care to all these different communities, and a lot of people just want the, you know what I'm saying, the next best politician, you know what I'm saying, in that spot, so. It's definitely, it's definitely a difficult, you know what I'm saying? A difficult race to get in, to even be a part of, so, with you kinda having to deal with the mayor and having to deal with the Chicago police, what, up to this point before getting to this field, and kind, and why you went to it? What has been your views and experiences with the Chicago police?
Yeah, bro, uh, I think police in general, especially when it comes to the black community, we don't, we don't have the best relations. Um, because police was slave patrols originally, you know, if you look back in history, um, and America has a racist history, you know, most of the, the law enforcement is white, even now, in the Chicago Police Department, I think they said like, you know, thirty seven, majority of the officers are white. Um, and, you know, that's, that's, uh, uh, an issue when you have a, a, uh, Chicago that's so diverse and, you know, has cultures from around the world in it, bro, um, and so I think that, but I also think at the same time that media plays a big role in tensions between community and officers. There's a lot of good that happens with officers in the community, um, that doesn't get highlighted, you know, we only see the bad things. Like today, I was just, um, uh, at a co- a meeting with the commander, uh, the twenty fifth district commander, uh, Gutierrez, I believe his name is. Um, and we were at the McDonald's, and they was, bro, they gave us like free drinks, you know, they gave us, uh, free burgers, cookies. They updated us on what was going on in the community, they brought resources out, like, why was the news not there, like, putting that on TV? You know, they had DCO officers there, they had the, the youth liaison officers there, bro, business liaison officers there, and it was just good vibes, you know. And it was like real down-to-earth, you know, like real good interactions, um, and I also had good interactions with the fifteenth police district. I, I think they one of the best districts in the city.
How, but the twenty fifth for me is like, is like here.
When, when you compare him to fifteen, I think, I think fifteen is the best, so anytime you comparing, you know, somebody to the best, it's always gonna be that, you know. But I think fifteen.
I feel like I see more, I see more minorities in, in, in fifteen, I know twenty fifth got a lot of Hispanic police officers. But, um, me growing up in the twenty fifth district, you know what I'm saying, growing up with my little troubles and stuff, you know what I'm saying? Do the crime, do the time, whatever, walk the bop, that's cool. But at the same time, there's, it's a little, it's a little hint of systematic, you know what I'm saying, racism. Cuz I grew up in the era of the stop and search, you know what I'm saying, so stop and frisk, I don't know if you're familiar with that, so we could just be walking down the street and they can just be like, oh, yeah, get on the wall and just search us every day, take our shoes off in the snow, all type of stuff. So what I say, you know what I'm saying, and that's why I love what people like you and Jamal Green are doing, cuz sometimes, even though we all may speak English, sometimes they send people in the community that don't speak our language, you know what I'm saying, so, just from that barrier, that language barrier, you know what I'm saying? He could be trying to say hi, but just the way he say it or the way he move, you know what I'm saying, now it's, it's a little like, what, why, you know what I'm saying, so. I have to feel like we need more people, it, it might seem, you know what I'm saying, easier said than done, but I feel like we have more officers, you know what I'm saying? From the communities that they were actually patrolling, it'd help with the community relations a little bit, but, um, hopefully that's something that, that you could help as well, with you being an alderman and kinda being the lynchpin between the two, the two people. So what do you intend to do or change or do differently, or, you know what I'm saying, as now that you running, you gotta have, you know what I'm saying, what are you? What are you offering to the, why, why should we vote for you?
Yeah, and, uh, I think, you know, to your point, before I get into that, you know, our officers, they do need to reflect the communities, like you saying, a language barrier. And not literally, like, sometimes it's not literally like language, uh, but sometimes it's cultural, right? Um, us as, as black people, we got a certain way of communicating, we a little loud when we communicate, you know? And some people might mistake that for aggression, but that's just how we talk, similar in the Hispanic community, they communicate in different ways that a, a black officer, a white officer might not understand. And so I think we need to have some type of like cultural, like curriculum that the officers, you know, if you and serving in the community that's predominantly black, well, you need to understand the culture, you need to actually go through a training that teaches you, you know, how do we talk? You know, what is our slang, you know, how, how have what we been through shaped who we are, you know, similar to the Polish, similar to the Spanish. Just so you get an idea of, you know, the people and their culture and how they interact. Um, secondly, uh, as I move through the community, bro, my three issues that have been highlighted to me are economic development. You know, building up like the, the economics in the area, more money, right? Um, education, right, you know, a lot of the schools, they, they underperforming, they underenrolled, they, they're under-resourced. Um, and then thirdly is public safety, like you, like we were just talking about, you know, communications between, um, law enforcement and the community. Um, oftentimes in our community, we get, we get law enforcement and other communities get public safety, right? So it's a difference there, you know, we need public safety, we don't need all the time law enforcement. So that's the one that, you know, some of the reasons why I'm running, bro.
Okay, man, this, 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 we're gonna have to do part two. So what I wanna ask you, man, is you talked on the public safety, man, and, and it's, it's a big deal. Especially, it's getting, I grew up in the Austin community, damn near my whole life. And it's getting worse and worse, you know what I'm saying, so I wanna ask you, what, what do you feel like? What an end from you having the, the vantage point, you know what I'm saying, of studying the stuff, you know what I'm saying, in the books and going to school for? What do you think plagues the city, like, why is it a gun problem and a, and a drug problem, wha- what's the problem?
Man, that's, that's layered, um, I think one thing is that we took
Let's just talk about your ward, excuse me. If, if you could, you know what I'm saying, what would you say the problem is, what's the influx, what's the, is it, what's driving it? You know what I'm saying, how would you attack it basically, what would be your strategy for, for combating some of this stuff?
Yeah, um, if we looking in a ward, and even, and even, I guess, Chicago broader, um, a lot of the resources have been taken out of the schools, you know. Um, even out of the community, you know, the YMCA, they used to be right there on Central and Race, you know, that, that's no longer there, um, you know.
Building still, what's the?
The building is still there, but the YMCA. No, it's people living there, um, it was, I was actually just over there today talking to them, the water was off for a minute and, uh, you know, they was having their struggles and um, that's actually not even in my ward, but, you know, that's, that's still the people, they right across the street, um, they still just as important. Uh, but, man, we don't have those places where we can go after school, you know, we don't have this, we, they not, we not teaching the skills no more. I don't know if you came up in this era, but like, they used to teach the home economics, you could learn how to cook. They used to give you trades, you know, where you could learn to, to make crafts for yourself, and really just broaden your, 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 your horizon and broaden your skill set, we not giving our kids no skills, you know, and the streets calling them more than we calling them, bro. And when there, when there ain't no jobs, you know, and you can't work for people that, that look like you, and there's a lot of vacant lots, and there ain't no communication from your alderman's office, that's like, I'm an answer, who calling me? And the streets calling me, and they can put money in my pocket, they can make sure I'm, you know, I'm safe, you know, they can relate to the struggles that I've been through, so I'ma go with them, who else is calling me, you know, they, they tell us to put down the guns, but what we gonna pick up? You know, they telling us not to do this and do this, but I can't see that, you know, we can't be what we can't see, and so that's really why I'm running, bro. So people can see like, man, you don't just gotta be an athlete, you know, you can be an author, you know, you can be an architect, you know, and if you want to, you could be an alderman, you know what I mean, so that's really why I'm just kinda running, you know, bring more resources to our children, bros, you know, build them up with skill sets. Uh, and also bring more resources to our business owners, you know, we live in a digital age, it's a lot easier to be an entrepreneur, start your own business. So I, I really wanna build up like the businesses in the area too.
Okay, what would you, what would you say, if you were to, to win office, what would be your biggest hurdle moving forward that you think? Or do you feel like everything is a challenge, but none that you, you not willing to take on?
Hey, these good questions, bro.
We live for, we live for responses like that, man.
Yeah, bro, uh, uh, I feel like getting people to care. Um, and even now, you know, um, like, people have been done so wrong, bro, so, so dirty and so grimy by the machine, right? Um, that they feel like they vote, don't matter no more, oh, it don't matter who I vote for, they not gonna care, they gonna get in there and do the same thing. Oh, they a part of the system, you know, um, they, they not gonna do nothing, they Oh, they a part of the system, you know, um, they they not gonna do nothing, they gonna make these false promises, you know, um, and they gonna do all this type of stuff. Uh, so just getting people to believe that, man, it really is somebody here that really wants to serve you. Like, you know, that really wants to, uh, uh, increase your quality of life, that really wants to make the area. Uh, um, nice and vibrant, and 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 a a place where you can love and respect and be able to walk outside and. You know, be able to take your kids, you know, uh, out on the streets and just walk and have them play without having to worry about, you know, them not coming home. Um, and so I think that'll be my biggest barrier, you know, just having people believe. Um, in government again, you know, or believe at least in their al- that their alderman, um, is invested in their best interest.
Yeah, and that that's, uh, that's dope, you know what I'm saying, I'm shout out Jamal Green again, cause what y'all brothers is doing, you know what I'm saying, I feel like is what the city needs. Like, we have brothers in every race, like y'all, the city, like, the the next day, you know what I'm saying? So, with that being said, you know what I'm saying, I I I I always, I I myself have fantasized like being an alderman, you know what I'm saying? Cause I feel like them the only people like see in the community, you know what I'm saying? And it's like, you you know, you see the mayor when when they running for for races, you might see him at the train or something, but like. Other than that, you don't really see him in the middle of your street unless it's a crime scene. So it's like, with you guys being directly, you know what I'm saying, from from the neighborhoods, that that's perfect too. But what I was trying to say, and I'm kinda, uh, running along here, is is that, um. Is, uh, I lose my train of thought, excuse me, well, basically, well, basically, we need aldermen that that. That if we wanna change, we gotta start with the alderman, you know what I'm saying, we gotta start from the bottom up, so we can put who we wanna put. In office, so when it's time for for the mayor race, now you running, when we can see you, you know what I'm saying, we know what you about, we know what was with you. So I feel like to to get changed, you gotta start voting with your with your alderman, getting to know your alderman and stuff like that. And I I notice, uh, where where is, you know what office is for your ward?
Uh, the, uh, current alderman's office, uh, yeah, it's right there on, uh, uh, um. Uh, North Avenue, right before you get to Narragansett.
Oh, that's it, that's often, it's, okay, that's, I know that, right there where the old Walgreens used to be. The car street from the pawn shop.
Yeah, yeah, right across, yeah.
Cause I was gonna say, like, I see other, uh, alderman offices, they, I don't never see, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so that's that's what the current office is, they have an office, uh, downtown on the fifth floor, and then they have an office in the community. Good, so, right now, the twenty ninth ward alderman.
How you happy with that location?
Uh, I think it's central, um, central to the ward, because, you know, the ward go all the way to the island, all the way over there on Roosevelt and and Austin. And then, that's like the most southern tip, Roosevelt and Austin, but then it go all the way up to like Belmont and Harlem. So that's a, that's a huge, you know, stretch, so I thi- I think North Avenue is is the most centrally located spot. Um, you know, if you're just looking at.
It makes sense, um, I'm not, uh, familiar with your with your constituents or the people that that you're going up against. But for anybody who may be watching or listening to them, watching or listening to this, why should they vote for you over them?
Man, um, people are excited for a fresh new voice, I would say. Um, they're tired of the same old thing, you know, electing the same old people, getting the same old results. Um, and, you know, no, nothing in age, but, you know, I'm running against, you know, two two gentlemen that are in their fifties, right? Um, you know, they a little older, um, you know, they don't have as much energy to move around to where a li- a young guy like myself, I'm out here knocking doors in eighteen degree weather. You know, they not, they not doing that, or, you know, they can pay people to do that, you know, I'm a young guy with energy, uh, that can do that. Um, I have the experience, I've been organizing in my community since I was fifteen. Uh, and I have a relatable experience that people can relate to, you know, I've I've seen struggle firsthand. I've overcame it, not only how did I survive, but I thrived. And, you know, I think people are excited to have a leader that has overcome those obstacles. Uh, just because when obstacles come our way in a ward, you'll have somebody that, man, he overcame something so great. What is a, what is a, a, um, you know, a ordinance to him, what is it to pass a law, you know, what is it to, you know, tackle crime, right? Um, and so, for me, bro, I would say that people are excited for a fresh new voice, people are excited for new and young energy. Most of, uh, at least I would think that, you know, most of the crime is being committed by by our younger people, right? And so if we can put a younger person in there, that they can see like, oh, man, I don't, I don't gotta take their route, I don't gotta steal this person's car, I don't gotta joyride. I can go to the alderman's office and get an internship, or I can go up there and talk to him, and he gonna put me in touch with this business owner. Or he gonna put me in touch with this program to where I can make that money, or I can maybe even get my own car or work on cars, right? Um, and so I think that's what, that's why people are excited, um, and if you looking for the punch number, I always tell people, punch fifty-three for Corey D.
Okay, okay, so, what I wanna ask you too, before you get up out of here, how are you connecting with the community? I heard you mentioned knocking on doors in eighteen degree weather, how are you, you know what I'm saying, knocking on doors? What else are you doing to to get out there, to get your face seen, to 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 meet people who may not know you, what what what's that like?
Yeah, man, so it's it's really a continuation of the stuff that I've been doing, uh, there's so many great organizations, bro, in Austin. Uh, that do a lot of great work, so many smaller people, man, like, I I was just at the, uh, Austintown Hall with Ayesha. She has a group of young men, um, I right over there at the Austintown Hall, um, her organization Root to Fruit, you know, uh. You know, Chris Thomas, you know, he has an organization, Your Passion First, uh, working with the fifteenth district and the twenty fifth district. Uh, man, you know, being at the churches, you know, kinda seeing what the needs are to faith community, working with business owners, bro. Um, and, man, really a continuation, you know, uh, about to start running some digital ads, you know, Facebook ads. You know, and really just being as visible as possible, I want people to, you know, whether they on their phone or whether they out in the community, I want them to see me. So, you know, putting up yard signs, now I'm getting to as many events as I can, uh, hopping on podcasts, you know, such as yourself, man. And, uh, really just, you know, s- uh, uh, get my name recognition out there for people that don't know me.
Okay, okay, uh, feel me asking, what's your support system like? I know you mentioned your girl a few times, missing meeting on the school, what's what's your support, your personal support system like, do they support what you doing? Do they think it's unsafe, do they be like, hey, Chicago politicians, man, they known for corruption, I don't know if you wanna, you know. I don't know if you wanna get into that, what's the, what's their response like?
Man, my, uh, and it's and it's tricky, I would say. Um, as far as far as my wife, bro, she been very supportive of me, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have did this unless I had her support. Um, you know, my family, uh, my immediate family, my mother, you know, and 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 that sort, they been real supportive of me. Um, and with the relationships that I built in the community, you know, Chicago politics is tricky, especially on the west side, because everybody know everybody. And it's like, as much as this young man is doing this great work, I know the alderman, or I got a business in a ward, and I might need something from him. So I can't put your sign in my window, even though I might, I think I'm I'mma vote for you, and I'm with you. But I still got, I can't make, I can't mess up my relationship with the alderman right now, because even when I do win, I don't take office until May. And so that's a whole three months that, you know, people, you know, they still gotta work with the current alderman, and a lot of stuff could happen in that time, so. It's been kinda interesting, bro, you know, I I know I have a lot of support, have I seen it as much as I know that it's there? No, I haven't, um, and for me, that's like, dang, like, do I hold a grudge against these people? You know, do I like, you know, like, just cut them off completely? Or do I take the route of, dang, okay, I understand right now that, you know, they can't really come out and support me how they want to, even though they are behind closed doors. So it's kinda, I be on a roller coaster sometimes, bro, sometimes I be like, man, forget them people. But then at the same time, I'll be like, man, I I understand. And, uh, and hopefully, you know, I know once I'm able to get in this position, you know, a lot more people will come out. But it's like, dang, you know, are they only coming out because I won, or is they coming out because they really, you know, supported me? And if so, dang, where was that support when I really needed you, you know, where was that support when I needed your help knocking on doors and and phone banking, you know, you wasn't there? Um, and so, yeah, it's it's been tricky, bro, but, you know, despite all of that, you know, uh, I got a good heart, bro, and I ain't gonna hold nothing against, you know, nobody. You know, I still gotta serve my people, bro, and that's that's what I intend to do.
Okay, okay, I I give you, I give you to put the shoes on the other foot for you, if you talking to Chicago people, they like, what, knocking on people's doors? But no, man, you definitely, that's that's definitely a big part of it, man, so what I wanna know, man, the question I wanna know before I let you get up out of here, man, is. Is, you know, some people, some people may be an alderman their entire career, but I feel like you, you want more out of this, so. So what's what's your goal, what what are you doing this for, what do you, what do you hope to to end up? What what's your personal, your personal goal, where you where you trying to get to?
Man, uh, another good question, man, uh, for me, right now, uh, it's really just to be the alderman, bro. Really just kinda focusing, like, buckling down on where I am now, because I don't know where, you know, I could be later, you know, people like, oh, you a young Barack, you might be the president.
When you start early and you really doing what you, that's inevitable, you gonna be in them.
And and I might be, bro, uh, but, you know, as far as like, I know, like, right now, you know, the ward needs me, and, um. You know, as alderman, I really do plan to serve as an alderman, uh, for, you know, as long as God, you know, sees fit. Um, but man, that's really where my focus has been, you know, getting elected, you know, becoming an alderman, you know. Learning and learning, continuing to develop, uh, my knowledge on the processes and procedures of the city. Um, and also educating people, I feel like a lot of people, they don't know what an alderman does, and sometimes they don't even know what's going on in their ward. Um, so, you know, like, uh, as soon as I get in, one of the first things I wanna do is create an app. You know, where you can see all the businesses in the ward, where you can, where the, uh, business directory, you can see the events going on in the ward, see what's happening. Um, and maybe where you can even post like, oh, I need this service here, you know, my tree is coming down, and, you know, how do I use? Technology to increase our quality of life and increase our communication, so people feel like, you know, that they're involved and that their voice is being heard.
Is there any, any debating or like town halls involved in running for alderman?
Yeah, there there was just a debate, uh, uh, February fourth, uh, Pastor Epton's church right there on fifty-nine hundred, uh, Block of Iowa. I'm I'mma be releasing some videos, bro, I took some videos, uh, they just came out with an article, I'll send it to you. Uh, and man, yeah, keep up with me, or y'all, if y'all following me, uh, following me, keep up with me, uh, on all platforms at Community Corey. And Corey is spelled C O R E Y, my website is communitycorey.com, Instagram is Community Corey, Facebook, Community Corey. Only thing is, my Twitter is Community underscore Corey, so I was upset that they got that, cause I wanted to keep all my.
I think I'm pretty much on two ninety more five, I think I'm clean on everything.
You clean on everything, see, that's a name like real unique, bro.
Cause it was an, it was a no cap podcast, and then I was telling a friend about it, I'm like, yeah, look it up. And she looked it up, it was like, she like, which one are you?
Two ninety more, yeah, that's that's a name, that's a name that that that's unique, bro.
Yeah, man, so, for so appreciate you coming through, man, tell the people when the race, where they can vote, what the punch, you know what I'm saying, all that good news.
Yeah, man, so early voting officially opened up, uh, on Monday, and so, uh, the early voting sites is open, if you need to know where to vote. Um, you can go to my website, communitycorey.com, and click on the vote tab, and it'll show you your ward, where you can vote at. Uh, right now, it's early voting, so you can go to any of the early voting sites, um, and vote, even if you here, you can go downtown, you can go out south, you know, and vote. Um, and then election day is February twenty eighth, um, and that, you do have to go to your polling place that day, um, that's on my website as well. And man, if y'all live in the twenty ninth ward, got family that live in the twenty ninth ward, uh, please, punch fifty-three for Corey D. If you don't live in Chicago, or if you don't live in the twenty ninth ward, but still wanna get involved, man, running a race in Chicago is not cheap. The average campaign, I wanna say, costs, bro, like, fifty thousand, and they say that's what you need to win, yeah. Fifty thousand, and so I could tell you, I ain't nowhere near that, uh, but man, if y'all donate a dollar or five dollars, I appreciate it. And if y'all wanna volunteer, just go to my website again, communitycorey.com, man, appreciate all the love and support.
Alright, man, appreciate you coming through. I got another question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, bro, go ahead and ask it.
How you how you feeling, how you feeling about this race, man, how you, how you, how you feeling, man?
Man, I'm really, I'm really hyped up, bro, I just got a a endorsement today from a national organization called Run For Something. Uh, so that's helped boost my profile, uh, did an article in the Tribune, um, and in the Sun Times, man. Uh, Austin Weekly did an article, so I'm really gaining a lot of momentum and traction, and man, really just excited. I saw something on Twitter today that said, in two thousand fifteen, right now, there was like, two thou- two thousand people have voted. I think it was like twenty-one hundred people have voted, um, in two thousand fifteen, that was the number for this time. And two thousand nineteen, the number was like twenty-four hundred people have voted, you know, at least based on this date right now. Bro, right now, to this day, I think they say, like, sixty thousand people, bro, have already, like, voted, whether that was like mail-in. From two thousand, bro, to like sixty thousand people, bro. So this, it's gonna be like a historical voter turnout across the city for mayor, for alderman, so, man, with more than votes. Yeah, I I I'm confident, I've been texting people, you know, so hopefully, you know, they see my texts, and, you know, been keeping up with me. And 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 a punch fifty-three for Corey D, man, elect a fresh new voice as their next twenty ninth ward alderman.
Alright, man, for sure, man, I'mma let, I'mma let you go now, man. Once you actual, I once you actual alderman, man, cause, cause that's definitely the one I wanna get more into, you know what I'm saying? Talking to the faces of the community, you know what I'm saying? That's definitely, it was definitely my first step into that direction, like I always say, I wanna get people in politics, a police officer, firefighter. Just, you know what I'm saying, so you can meet these people, you know what I'm saying, your neighborhood, so, like I said, appreciate you coming on the show, man, can't wait to have you back. Good luck. In a minute.